Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're calling to order the regular meeting of the Jackson City Council, the City of Jackson, Mississippi, April 22nd, 2025 at 10:02 a.m. here at City Hall. We have with us today Pastor Cole of Covenant Presbyterian. Welcome. We're so glad you're here. He is going to lead us in our invocation, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Foot if he will raise, then lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So would everyone please stand? Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here, and greetings from Covenant Pres. And just so you know, we pray for y'all every week. Every week in our worship service, we lift y'all up. So let's go to the Lord in prayer. Let us pray. Almighty God, you have revealed yourself to us as Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. You are Lord of all creation, Lord over all the earth, Lord of all peoples, Lord of all nations, and Lord of all cities. You are Lord of this city, the city that we love, this city that is our home. Father, we commend Jackson, Mississippi, to your care, your merciful care. In the city with soul, you know every single soul. You know the tragedies, and you know the triumphs. You know the loves, and you know the losses. You know, and you are present in every single one. Gracious God, we pray that you would bless our mayor, Mayor Lumumba. We pray that you would bless each and every council member. We pray that you would grant unto each of them wisdom and discernment and a desire for justice. And we pray that they would serve this city, serve their wards, and serve them well, knowing that the authority that they have comes from you. May they serve every soul in this city. And we pray this in the name of Jesus Christ the Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for that beautiful invocation, and we do appreciate the weekly prayer, and hopefully some daily prayers. So thank you. All right, and thank you, Mr. Foot. All right, colleagues, any introductions? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to open and close the meeting in honor of Mrs. Jolene Swayze, who passed away, and is a longtime member, a resident, and active citizen in Jackson and in Ward 1.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just wanted to make an announcement. This weekend, this Saturday, there's going to be a community cleanup at Alter Woods subdivision. And the other announcement is this weekend, we have our Lynch Street Festival. Starts with Friday night banquet and dinner at the Masonic Temple. And then on Saturday, they're going to have all types of events at the Lynch Street area over by Jackson State. They will have a children's area. They will have musical folks guest in there. They will have vendors and a lot of things. It's going to be a lot of fun. Please come out and join us at Lynch as we celebrate Lynch Street.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Anybody else? I would like to open today's meeting in memory of Avery Nijum, the youngest daughter of Leon and Waddell Nijum, who died last night of, after a very, very long illness. Keep them in your prayers.
Madam President, I think we would be remiss if we didn't just honor the passing of our Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Yes, I appreciate. All us Catholics up here really appreciate that. There, you know, it's always been amazing just how many Catholics sit on the Jackson City Council. And yes, he was a great man and a great leader, and we appreciate your remembering him. All right, colleagues, we have several public comments. We have two relating to an agenda item, so we're going to go to that first. Robert Ireland here to speak on item number nine. Mr. Ireland, welcome. You have three minutes, and we appreciate your respecting that three minutes. And if you would please turn on the mic, the green light should be on, and state your name for the record before you begin. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lindsay. My name's Robert Ireland. I'm here on behalf of a group of apartment owners that are concerned about the effect of the rate increase on their tenants. At the April 8 meeting, Jackson Water described the potential rate increases being about $9 for the average residential customer. Unfortunately, the rate increase is going to be much more than that for the thousands of Jackson residents that live in apartment complexes. Using the same example that Jackson Water did, I calculated the rate increase for tenants at $22 a month. And it's simply just going to have a negative impact today, and it's going to have a negative impact over the life of the 20-year plan that's been proposed by Jackson Water, who has basically asked the city council to take it on faith that $104 million in yearly operational expenses are necessary, and that the $450 million in federal dollars allocated for capital expenditures to improve the system will be made in due course, without any clear plan on when and how those improvements will affect the operational expenses going forward, let alone what apartment residents could expect to pay for water bills. Just so that you understand, the proposed operational expenses in fiscal year 2025 are $104 million, but in 20 years, they're $177 million. How much are folks going to have to pay over the life of this plan? You know, if the rate increases continue, as they have to to meet those expenses, folks are going to leave, meaning there will be even fewer people to pay to foot the bill for the water that they get. Jackson Water, at a minimum, has the obligation to provide true notice to the city council and an opportunity to be heard on the rate increases. And I would encourage the city council to ask, number one, for a clear explanation that all of the yearly operational expenses are necessary and can't be spread out over additional time. And two, to get a clear plan on how $450 million in capital expenditures are going to be made, when they're going to be made, and how that will affect and reduce the costs of tenants' water bills. And if it please the council, I just had a handout that explained how I got to the $22.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Ireland. Would you hand it to the clerk, please? Thank you. We appreciate your being here, and I'm trusting that you also are sharing this information with Judge Wingate.
Not yet. According to the stipulated order, Jackson Water doesn't have to ask for court approval to increase the rates.
Ignore counsel.
Well, they have to present the information to you, but they don't have to.
Actually, Judge Wingate, as I understand it, has the final say. Thank you. All right, Mr. Oliver O'Quinn here to also speak on number nine. All right, Mr. Oliver O'Quinn here to also speak on number nine.
Good morning. I'm here concerned the water, the rate, want to add 11 something percent to the water.
Good morning. I'm here concerned the water, the rate, want to add 11 something percent to the water.
They just added $40 to our bill last year, just an extra $40.
They just added $40 to our bill last year, just an extra $40.
I never knew what it meant, but I knew I had to pay it.
I never knew what it meant, but I knew I had to pay it.
So I'm wondering, can the councilman do anything about it?
So I'm wondering, can the councilman do anything about it?
If they can, what has they done about it?
If they can, what has they done about it?
Because, you know, this is just, it's ridiculous that a person have to go through this
Because, you know, this is just, it's ridiculous that a person have to go through this
for water to be this much, cost that much.
for water to be this much, cost that much.
Yes, sir. I do, we all truly sympathize with your position, and we're grateful you came before us today. Yes, sir. I do, we all truly sympathize with your position, and we're grateful you came before us today. The sad truth is, we can't do anything about it, really. The sad truth is, we can't do anything about it, really. And this all goes before the federal courts. I mean, this is the federal Judge Wingate's decision. And this all goes before the federal courts. I mean, this is the federal Judge Wingate's decision. And I'm sure we'll have more discussion about it when we get to item nine. And I'm sure we'll have more discussion about it when we get to item nine. But I would encourage you to engage with the federal court. But I would encourage you to engage with the federal court.
Federal court?
Federal court?
Judge Wingate. Judge Wingate.
Okay.
Okay.
I would, because we really, at the end of the day, do not have any say. I would, because we really, at the end of the day, do not have any say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry. We're all. And I'm sorry. We're all.
Well, sorry is not helping, and, you know, they're just coming along just doing the city of Jackson
Well, sorry is not helping, and, you know, they're just coming along just doing the city of Jackson
the way the federal government, the way they want to do it.
the way the federal government, the way they want to do it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You know, we don't have any say-so at all.
You know, we don't have any say-so at all.
Yes, sir. We're so sorry. It's what happens when the federal government gets involved, and I'm sorry. Yes, sir. We're so sorry. It's what happens when the federal government gets involved, and I'm sorry. All right, we're going to move on now to Dr. Lucy Cooper. This is a non-agenda item, All right, we're going to move on now to Dr. Lucy Cooper. This is a non-agenda item, and it is about trash near her church. and it is about trash near her church.
First of all, I would like to say good morning.
First of all, I would like to say good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
I am the assistant pastor at the Worriful Gospel Baptist Church.
I am the assistant pastor at the Worrful Gospel Baptist Church.
We have a blight there that is embarrassing, and it's a health hazard.
We have a blight there that is embarrassing, and it's a health hazard.
All the trash that is piled up on that street, on both sides of the street.
All the trash that is piled up on that street, on both sides of the street.
And you can clearly see that a dump truck had to come in there to bring all of those pieces of brick,
And you can clearly see that a dump truck had to come in there to bring all of those pieces of brick,
looked like they dug up a parking lot and brought all of their bricks piled up high
looked like they dug up a parking lot, and brought all of their bricks piled up high
all down the street, tires all down the street, chairs, furniture, couches, all down the street.
all down the street, tires all down the street, chairs, furniture, couches, all down the street.
This is a health hazard, and I believe snake den as well.
This is a health hazard, and I believe snake den as well.
And our church, my church is the only building on that street, and it's awful. It is embarrassing.
And our church, my church is the only building on that street, and it's awful. It is embarrassing.
It hurts my heart to see that and to know that when people come to service,
It hurts my heart to see that and to know that when people come to service,
you're coming to a place of worship, and you're having to drive through that.
you're coming to a place of worship, and you're having to drive through that.
That is heartening. It's awful to see the people trying to get there, and they're looking on both sides,
That is heartening. It's awful to see the people trying to get there, and they're looking on both sides,
and then sometimes it's stuck out in the street.
and then sometimes it's stuck out in the street.
Well, we have had to. Every Sunday morning, my husband and I get out there and clean our lot
Well, we have had to. Every Sunday morning, my husband and I get out there and clean our lot
before we can have Sunday School every Sunday morning.
before we can have Sunday School every Sunday morning.
And not only the trash will be on the premises, but we have had dead rodents on our porch.
And not only the trash will be on the premises, but we have had dead rodents on our porch.
It is so awful. It is so hurting to see this.
It is so awful. It is so hurting to see this. And I pray that something can be done, because if we cannot be good stewards
And I pray that something can be done, because if we cannot be good stewards with what we have here,
with what we have here, how we expect to go to heaven?
how we expect to go to heaven? This is awful, and I pray this will open up the eyes of the people that have controlled here,
This is awful, and I pray this will open up the eyes of the people that have controlled here,
because we need something done quick, fast, and in a hurry.
because we need something done quick, fast, and in a hurry.
And like I said, this is a health hazard. I can't stand to see that.
And like I said, this is a health hazard. I can't stand to see that.
This coming Sunday will be 33 years that my church will be celebrating their anniversary.
This coming Sunday will be 33 years that my church will be celebrating their anniversary.
And we have people coming from out of town, coming to the church, but having to drive through this.
And we have people coming from out of town, coming to the church, but having to drive through this.
Can you imagine having to drive through something like this trying to get to your house?
Can you imagine having to drive through something like this trying to get to your house?
This is awful. It is embarrassing, and I do pray that something can be done
This is awful. It is embarrassing, and I do pray that something can be done
quick, fast, and in a hurry to help this need.
quick, fast, and in a hurry to help this need.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Because our people need a sense of hope, and they feel like if they don't have any hope,
Because our people need a sense of hope, and they feel like if they don't have any hope,
they can't get any help.
they can't get any help.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And I pray that we can get some help.
And I pray that we can get some help.
Thank, and we appreciate your coming before us today to bring us. Thank, and we appreciate your coming before us today to bring us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Griselle? Mr. Griselle?
Thank you. I've known Pastor Cooper for over 40 years.
Thank you. I've known Pastor Cooper for over 40 years.
And this issue that she speaks of is on Percy Simpson,
And this issue that she speaks of is on Percy Simpson,
which is between Sunset Boulevard and Mega Evers.
which is between Sunset Boulevard and Mega Evers.
And we've been fighting this issue for quite a few years, because you actually have contractors,
And we've been fighting this issue for quite a few years, because you actually have contractors,
state contractors, local contractors, who are actually doing a lot of this dumping over there.
state contractors, local contractors, who are actually doing a lot of this dumping over there.
I've requested that cameras be put up, even if it's a hunting camera.
I've requested that cameras be put up, even if it's a hunting camera.
We need to get something and get something established over there to catch these perpetrators,
We need to get something and get something established over there to catch these perpetrators,
because the amount of dumping that they're doing on this street is absolutely egregious.
because the amount of dumping that they're doing on this street is absolutely egregious.
And as she stated, it's only one building there, because they tore down what we used to call Moon Bean Store.
And as she stated, it's only one building there, because they tore down what we used to call Moon Bean Store.
And then you had Dawson Elementary, which, of course, we know is now closed.
And then you had Dawson Elementary, which, of course, we know is now closed.
But something's got to happen there, because you have this wooded area,
But something's got to happen there, because you have this wooded area,
then you have this mechanic shop or whatever it is, but they're taking advantage of this area.
then you have this mechanic shop or whatever it is, but they're taking advantage of this area.
And again, nobody, none of the parishioners there, nobody deserves to see this junk every single day.
And again, nobody, none of the parishioners there, nobody deserves to see this junk every single day.
And so I ask that the city, please, at least get over there this week, try to before their anniversary.
And so I ask that the city, please, at least get over there this week, try to before their anniversary. Nobody deserves to be embarrassed by where they worship. Thank you.
Nobody deserves to be embarrassed by where they worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Griselle. Thank you, Councilwoman Griselle. Chris, did you get all of this? You did? Chris, did you get all of this? You did? Okay, thank, okay, thank you. We appreciate. Okay. Okay, thank, okay, thank you. We appreciate. Okay. So you'll get back in touch with her? Thank you so much. So you'll get back in touch with her? Thank you so much. All right, number two, Zach Service. All right, number two, Zach Service. Welcome. Welcome.
Check. Oh, there we go. Zach Service, resident Ward 3. Two things I want to talk about today. Check. Oh, there we go. Zach Service, resident Ward 3. Two things I want to talk about today. One, are y'all familiar with the space when you're leaving the city downtown One, are y'all familiar with the space when you're leaving the city downtown and when you're coming in off Jefferson Street, that green space where there's that little circular dirt path? and when you're coming in off Jefferson Street, that green space where there's that little circular dirt path? Okay, I'm not sure if there's any plans for that space, but I really would like to see us Okay, I'm not sure if there's any plans for that space, but I really would like to see us utilize that as a functional green space. utilize that as a functional green space. I think that it is a beautiful piece of greenery. I think that it is a beautiful piece of greenery. I think that it's at a great little spot when you're coming in and out of the city. I think that it's at a great little spot when you're coming in and out of the city. I think we could actually really utilize that as something that is noticed I think we could actually really utilize that as something that is noticed when you come into the city and when you go out of the city. when you come into the city and when you go out of the city. We could put a few benches there, maybe a playground or something. We could put a few benches there, maybe a playground or something. You'd have to, of course, place a fence around it if you're going to do that. You'd have to, of course, place a fence around it if you're going to do that. But I just wanted to put the idea in y'all's minds that we should utilize that green space, because it's a beautiful space. It's already pretty cleared out, and it's right where people can see when they come in and come out. So I think it's something we could utilize. Secondarily, on a completely separate topic, on the issue of electrician licensing. I get a lot of calls and conversations from electricians who do business in the city of Jackson and around, and they're very frustrated by the fact that they have to get a completely separate license in addition to their state license, their state master electrician's license, in order to do business and then get their permits pulled in the city of Jackson. It's very redundant. It doesn't even have the stringency of the state master's requirements. And in my understanding and assertion is it was really put in place as a screw-you-to-the-state for their master license. And I think that it's hurting the ability of small business owners and many electricians to do simple and easy business with the city of Jackson. So I'd like to put it before y'all's minds and the administration as well to see if there is a way we can work to get rid of that, because there's no point of having a separate local license when the state master's license covers way more. If anything, and it's not on the website, like, you can't find the application or the fee. If you go to the contracting and licensing page, it doesn't work. So that's something if y'all would work on that, getting fixed on the website, please. But it's just not necessary. We don't need it. Most of the cities around us, like Madison Pearl, they don't require that. Even in Ridgeland and Ridgeland, their requirement is much more simple. It's like a $25 application. You provide a few documents, and you're good. You can do business. So let's get rid of red tape. Let's get rid of things that are stumbling blocks and are hindrances to people who want to do business with the city of Jackson and make it easy for people to do business. So I'd appreciate it if y'all would look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Service. We appreciate your coming before us today. Next, we have James Hopkins, who is going to come before us to talk about Bailey Avenue Green Space. Good morning, Mr. Hopkins. Welcome. We're glad to have you here before us. And please introduce who you have with you.
Okay, this is Zion Washington. He may be on the list, but we can collaborate and shorten the time a little bit if that's okay.
Y'all will just speak together?
We're going to speak together.
Okay, but state your name for the record, Mr. Hopkins.
Okay, James Hopkins. I'm the CEO and founder of Reset Jackson.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I am Zion Washington, a freshman political science major at Jackson State University.
Welcome.
All right, and Zion is our new youth president of Reset Jackson. So the reason we're here today, I want to talk about the Melvin Bender Memorial Garden. It's located at the bottom of the Bailey Avenue Bridge. I passed through there a few days ago, and I noticed that it's just grown up. My first question is if the city owns it, and if the city does own it, how can we collaborate with the city to bring that spot back to life? And Mr. Zach is just going to explain why community gardens and things like that are so important, so.
So, okay, yeah, Zion. So one of the main things I noticed in the city of Jackson, coming down from Chicago, Illinois, was that, yes, we may have a water crisis. Yes, we may have a crisis on violence or blight housing. But one of the main things that I noticed that we have and we struggle with is an identity crisis within our youth. And one of the ways that we can combat that is by providing different opportunities for the youth and the community to get engaged in things that build esteem in the city, whether it be building a garden or renovating properties or things of that nature. So we just want to come back and reinstate pride into the city with small movements and small activities that people can actually come together and unite on, because one of the things that we struggle with in this city, from my perspective at least, is that we do not have enough pride in the way we do things. So one of the ways to reinstate that is by glorifying our city, bringing back pride, and allowing us to do things that make our city look better for people that may not think we look the best, so.
Thank you so much. And we have recently had, we have recently had several nonprofit organizations approach the city, and we've had the orders come before us, creating a memorandum of understanding between the organizations who have reached out and are working with the city to take care of certain parks and green spaces. And Chris back there can help you with this, and he will be able to walk you through it. So we appreciate your coming before us, and we appreciate your caring about.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hartley, wait, wait a minute, guys.
No, 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 it's fine. I just want to make an announcement. I've just been notified that Keep Jackson Beautiful is already working on the area for a green space that Mr. Service presented.
Thank you. All right, that is good. All right, so we are moving on now, colleagues. That's all of our public comments, and we are now moving to the consent agenda. Clark?
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Sommo, second.
We have a motion and a second, assuming no one wants to pull any one item out. All in favor?
Woo woo.
Wait, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just have something to say. Not pulling an item out. I just want to thank Community Improvement Planning and Legal for the work at 737 Magdalale Road. You know, colleagues, this is one of the first uses of that demolition for commercial properties. And this has been a service storage station that has been an eyesore in Ward 6 for years. And I just want to, you know, to see the turnaround in them using those funds for demo of commercial properties is doing real good, and I just want to thank them for moving real fast on it.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. We worked hard on that during budget, for sure. All right, it's all in favor? All right, it's a vote of 6-0. Thank you. So we're now moving on to item number six, which is an introduction of the ordinance.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, amending sections 58-36 and 58-37 and repealing section 58-38 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances for the purpose of adopting the 2024 edition of the International Fire Code, including certain amendments to said fire code.
All right, colleagues, this does not require a vote today. I am assuming, did y'all discuss this in work session yesterday? You did. All right, any other questions or comments or discussion? City legal, do you feel like you need to explain this one on the record? It's all good? Okay. All right, then, colleagues. Oh, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just one question. Is this time sensitive? Okay, all right.
All right, good. Then we're going to move on then to adoption of ordinances, colleagues, with item number seven. Clark?
Ordinance amending section 2-36 and 2-191 of the City of Jackson Code of Ordinances to increase the mayor and the members of the council salaries.
Sommo, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. We've had great discussion about this in both work session and then again in the meeting last week. Colleagues, is there anything else anyone would like to, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Madam President, we had some, on our last finance committee meeting, there were some discussions about some shortfalls in our budget, and we asked that the directors hold off on some of their increases. I would ask the same thing here, until at least we can have our budget meeting on later in this week.
So you want to hold it for a week until after we have the budget meeting to analyze it more?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else have a, yes, Councilwoman Clay?
In this time sensitive?
We have to have it voted on before the end of this term, if that's correct. Is that right?
And if we vote on the increases, do we have to increase some of it in the budget for real? It's just an opportunity during the four years that we can get the increase at some point?
I believe, legal, wouldn't it take effect at the start of the next term? Or can we delay it until after the budget season? Well, it won't be me. I won't be here. Y'all have to be figuring that one out. But, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, no, I was going to say it would start at the beginning of next term. One of the reasons that I believe Mr. Hartley was wise, because in finance meeting, one of the things that we have to do as a councils, we have to make the decision on how to fund those raises within our budget, which means that there might be some changes in the way we handle our staffing, et cetera, legal fees, whatever we set aside. So those are some things that we have to look at and make sure.
All right, Councilwoman Clay's fine. Okay.
Know the rule on when it had to come through, so I'm real good with it.
Well, thank you for that, Councilwoman Clay. All right, then I'm going to table this until the next city council meeting. Mr. Hartley, Mr. Banks, would y'all withdraw your?
I withdraw my second.
I would draw, unless you want to just put it in finance sort of.
No, we're not putting it in committee. I'm tabling it until the next meeting.
But we're going to table.
And then we will have a finance committee meeting, and you can put it on the agenda for discussion, Mr. Hartley, if you choose.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm not putting this in committee.
Okay.
I know committees are a place where things go to die.
They ain't going to die, my.
But yes, ma'am, Madam President, I respect that.
So, all right, thank you.
But we, Madam President, we do appreciate the patience of, I suspect, our directors. You know, they were anticipating we act on it during our last finance committees, and we didn't, because we saw some more shortfall. So I appreciate us just holding off until we can work some issues out in our budget meeting.
All right, thank you, colleagues. So we've tabled it to the next city council meeting. In between now and then, we will have a finance committee meeting, and you're going to put it on for discussion, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good. That's organized and ready to go. Good. Item number eight.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, establishing chapter six, section six dash four, City of Jackson Transit System Advertising Ordinance to regulate advertising in Jackson Transit Authority Facilities, Vehicles, and Publications.
Sommo, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, we've had some discussion on this prior. Any other questions or comments about this item? Hearing that, all in favor? It carries with a vote of 6-0. Thank you. Item nine? Item nine.
of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Jackson, Mississippi, to codify revisions previously implemented by the interim third-party manager of the city's water and sewer systems and to increase the volumetric rates for water and sewer.
Somu, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item. We heard a fairly lengthy presentation from Mr. Hennepin at the last city council meeting. And certainly all heard from our constituents on this item. Colleagues, any additional questions or comments? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just want to state for the record, I did request for some information on, you know, Jackson Water's ability to look at reduction in cost in other ways instead of just an increase on the citizens. And I just want to record reflect that I have not received anything since that request. And then furthermore, you know, Madam President, last time I voted by extension because it was my feeling at that time that it didn't matter because it goes before judges, so what it has been said. But this time, I'm going to vote no because I feel like it is important. You know, this is a democracy. We represent the voice of the people, you know, the people we serve, our citizens. And I believe that if I do anything less than what they are saying, then I'm not representing them. I mean, if, if, you know, Jackson Water is going to run its shop and act like they respect the voice of the citizens of Jackson, but then won't even take the time to adhere, listen, or respond, then that is problematic within itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. The, I'd just like to say that while Jackson Water has done a great job in improving the reliability of our water system and continues to work on the water pipes and all the things that make it, will make it more sustainable in the future. The, they also oversee the water collections and they have been overseeing the water collections for right almost two and a half years. And their collection rate's only at 70%. And I don't think it's fair to the 70% of the people who have been following the rules and paying their bills to include the extra access charges, for them to see their rates go up partly, in fact, because they, the, there's other people that haven't paid and Jackson Water hasn't tracked them down and made, brought the collection rate up to a national average, which is around 98%. So, I'm, I can't support this, even though I'm pleased with the reliability of the water system, the improved reliability. They, they have to raise their standard of collections to a level that's fair to all the citizens of Jackson. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and, and I, I concur with the previous remarks. We, there's a lot of citizens out there asking, why should, you know, why should my rates be raised when you're not even collecting for these other folks? And I would, I would encourage Jackson Water to get that 100% accounting of all individuals and to look at your processes, any cost savings, you know, through your whole entire processes before you come back to the citizens within 13 months and ask them for another increase. So, this is, you know, this is not acceptable and my folks do not want another water increase. And that, I will vote to the negative on this.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley, anyone else? Well, I too abstained last time because it was really the consensus of the council that it was a necessary step, but we absolutely did not want a rate increase for our citizens. And we really felt like, though, I think as a unified body, I believe we all abstained, was that it wouldn't make any difference because it had to go before the judge. But, and that the judge made the final decision. But this time, I feel like it is important that I be a part of sending a message to this judge that this is excessive and it's too much and it's more than our citizens should be asked to bear. And we heard from Mr. Hennepin, he's going to, you know, what he said was, if we don't approve this, then he's not going to have the resources he's, or if it doesn't get approved down the road, that he's not going to have the resources he needs to continue making the improvements, which we all appreciate, I believe, and we all are grateful for. But at the same time, I agree that we have got to put some of the onus back on Jackson Water. They have got to own this and they've got to figure out how to come up with a way to collect the water rates, the water, the water bills that are due. And so, for that reason, I too am going to vote no. So, with that, anybody else? All in favor? All opposed? It's a no with six zero. All right, we're moving on now to claims. Is there anything I need to know about claims since I wasn't at work session? Okay, Clark?
Order approving claims appearing at pages 339 to inclusive thereon on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $5,329,252.20 for make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Somu, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Malinbecker, would you please go over larger claims for us?
Good morning, Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO. The following are the four largest claims on this docket. There are as follows. Richard's disposal in the amount of $851,000, paid out of Fund Nine, landfill sanitation. This is for the residential trash collection for February 2025. Second is Richard's disposal in the amount of $851,000, paid out of Fund Nine, landfill sanitation. This is for the residential trash collection for March 2025. Third is Entergy in the amount of $368,477.20, paid out of Fund One, General Fund. This is for streetlights. And the fourth is Metro Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $289,358.68, paid out of Fund Two Zero Three, Jackson Convention Appropriation. This is for the Visitors Bureau transfer of taxes February 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Malinbecker. Colleagues, any questions about claims?
Just, just, just one comment. You mentioned, how much are we paying Entergy for streetlights? Okay, I plan on having a planning, planning committee meeting next month. And I want Entergy there to explain why we have so many light outages. And if they're listening, then yeah, you're going to be here and answer our questions. We're paying you, we expect us to have our areas lit up. Thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? It's a vote of five to one, thank you, colleagues. All right, we're moving on now to payroll, item 11.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 316732, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero, thank you. Item 12.
Order authorizing pay, payment, the payment of the sum of $8,000 to Rashad Kason as reimbursement for monies paid for a 2017 Infiniti vehicle bearing the vehicle identification number JNEV7AP2HM739065, retrieved by the Jackson Police Department on May 9, 2024, after the purchase at auction.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. I read it last night when I got home and I'm assuming y'all discussed it at work session yesterday. So, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it's a vote of six zero, thank you. Item 13.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Jackson, Mississippi Police Department and the Flock Group Incorporated for the Flock Safety Raven for audio detection of crime indicators.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Chief Wade is here, any, any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, ma'am. If Chief Wade doesn't mind, I'd like for him to explain the benefits that taxpayers are going to be seeing from this.
Joseph Wade, Chief of Police, good morning, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
First of all, I attend community meetings all over the city of Jackson. And they have, they're very consistent on the quality of life issues that they're facing. The first and foremost is the dangerous, reckless, lawless individuals who are shooting guns in our community. They're shooting guns in our community. We are now moving forward in technology. This is going to be a pilot program, a demo by Flock Safety, and it is gunshot detection, gunshot detection. Right now, the pilot program is going to be in South Jackson. We've identified possible locations in South Jackson. We do look at expanding this program across the city, but this is something we should have had 10 years ago, absolutely. We're going to have it now and we are going to locate these individuals who continue to shoot in our city. And we know that gravity is finite, what goes up must come down. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome to you, Chief Watts as well. Colleagues, any questions while we have the chief here?
Morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chief. A former councilman, I think out of war, was it War Six? That made this suggestion some years ago.
Yes.
And they went to a conference and they told about this technology.
Yes.
Where it done it then, because these gunshots are crazy. People calling, older people scared, 80 years old on the floor. So, I support what you're doing and I support when these officers come out on these calls trying to do something about these gunshots.
Yes.
Because that fear could give an older person a heart attack.
Absolutely. And councilmen, they're not shooting 22s and 357, they're shooting assault rifles. And this gunshot detection is going to triangulate where it came from. It's going to put us right in their backyard and I'm very excited about it.
Is it funded, do we have the money?
We, this is a demo right now. Our plan is to apply for grant funding as a part of our CEGI program, our partnership with the ATF. But if not, my budget ask will be for the funding of the shot squad and technology.
Finally, Madam President, Chief, can you say something about these people shooting at officers? You, y'all got to say something because it's growing more and more, that's unacceptable.
Yes, I've had a couple of press conferences about that. I'm very disturbed behind it. I did respond to the scene where the Capitol Police officer was shot at and his vehicle had bullet holes on one side that exited the other side. We had one of our sergeants who responded to a scene and he was being shot at as well. We have individuals, councilmen, who are, who don't respect authority in our community. Then you compound that with these individuals who own lights and clicks on social media. And we've ident, identified two to three of those individuals who were pointing guns at law enforcement as well. And we're not just going to put them in jail for the weekend. I'm looking for some federal prosecutions in these cases.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just, just quickly, Chief, if you can get with Mississippi Wildlife and Fisheries, our Forest Hill Road specifically behind our neighborhood seems to be a problem with wild cats. Thank God for one of my neighbors, former fireman, I ain't going to say his name, but he, he took them out because he was terrorizing, but no, big, like, real Mississippi wild cats.
Yeah, and that's another partnership that I have, Colonel Carter, who's the Colonel of Mississippi Wildlife and Fisheries. We talked about two weeks ago and he talked about all the resources that they could bring to Jackson. I didn't know our issue was these bobcats, but we'll definitely address that and I'll give them a call today.
Yeah, I shouldn't have moved in the woods, but you know, nevertheless.
Yes, actually some coyotes out there too. I've seen them as well, but I'll reach out to them today, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. All right, there are no other questions, all in favor? It carries with a vote of seven zero, thank you. All right, colleagues, we'll move into 14.
Order ratifying and authorizing the City of Jackson, Mississippi Fire Department payment for the GTAC Inc. subscription renewal for the years 2023 and 2024.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero, thank you. Item 15.
Order amending previously approved recreation trails grant project agreement between the City of Jackson and the Mississippi Department of Wildlife, Fisheries, and Parks to extend the deadline of said project to May 31, 2025 for improvements to the cart track located at Buddy Bucks Park.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments, colleagues? I'm assuming there was some discussion yesterday.
Yes, it was.
All right, hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero. Item 16.
Order authorizing mayor to execute a rent adjustment amendment furnished by the Board of Trust of the Jackson Public School District concerning the lease of parcel number 729-1-3 located on Watkins Drive and further authorizing payment of any rents due.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments on this item? Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Minister. Can you explain this, what are we dealing with with this item, please?
Yes, sir. Abram Mohammed Parks and Best, I mean Parks and Rec, I'm sorry. This particular item is dealing with annually where we renew the lease that we have with JPS. And you know the, the area, although it's listed as the corner of Watkins and can't see the other side street, but it's simply Lake Heiko. And this is the lease that we renew that's budgeted. There's nothing we're asking for, it's budgeted every year to where this particular location is Lake Heiko.
Is it the park itself?
Yes, sir, the, the whole entire park, which includes the tennis court, the park, the playground, the whole entire area.
How much do we pay?
$25,000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. My director, two questions. One, is there anything you need from us to go ahead and get everything we need to get done with Forest Hill Park? Because there's going to be a lot of activity out there. And then the second thing, is there anything you need from us as far as the gym floor for the gym at West Side?
Yes, sir, thank you for that. We'll start with the latter first. Thanks to collaboration with the Department of Planning and Development, we have been able to identify some funds through CDBG that would address the issue for the gym floor for West Side and have it ready in time enough for the season. As far, as far as Hill Avenue, we're still acquiring the second quotes that we're needed in order to be able to give you actual facts of what it would take to pave that area and not just patch it because, you know, we'll be dealing with, with the weather and everything goes on with that. I anticipate being able to get that answer back to you by the close of the week.
Yeah, thank you. And colleagues, you know, Dr. Muhammad Nala does a good job, but I think it's very important as we get into these summer months, you know, I didn't even know, because I guess I don't pay attention like I should, but the kids are out of school, you know, yesterday, today. And, you know, a lot of them will call and say, hey, I want to go to the gym, I want to go do this, I want to go do this. And that's how I found out about West Side Floor. And, you know, with a lot of activities, football teams, all that starting to practice, we just want to make sure that, you know, that while a parent or, you know, a fan on their way in to watch their child play football or baseball, they can't, you know, suffer severe damage. And so, if, if, when that comes before, if we can get that approved as quickly as possible so that we could move forward, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And let's get back to the item that's on the floor. And colleagues, I'm going to ask that we, that we stay on target and stay with the item that is on the floor and not, you know, do too much editorializing, Mr. Banks. Thank you very much. All right, so, all right, let's move on to, to the, any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All right, it is a vote of seven zero, thank you. This is a short agenda, let's keep it that way.
We're going to have to wash these vacations, you go on, Madam President.
I'm jet lagged. Item, all right, it was a vote of seven zero. All right, item 17.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Grove Park Junior Golf Clinic, Inc. for the use of the city-owned Pete Brown Golf Facility located at 3200 Woodrow Wilson Drive.
Somu, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, any questions or comments? Did y'all discuss this one yesterday? Okay, good. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it is a vote of seven zero, thank you, colleagues. Item 17.
18.
Oh, 19, I'm sorry. Item 19. 18 was pulled for the record, 19.
Order rejecting the bid of Hemfield Construction Company, Inc. for the Maker Everest Raise Grant Project, Federal Project Number RA1-7281-00006, due to the bid significantly exceeding the construction, construction estimate.
Somu, second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wright, can you give us some kind of idea if we pull this, we rebid it? What kind of timeframe are we looking at now?
Louis Wright, CAO. This bid was pulled or rejected because of significant increase than the engineering estimate on it. We only received 25 million. The bid price came in at 40. The bid price came in at forty-three million, and we are rejecting it. We are talking with the construction company to find out why it came in so high, and we're also talking with Jackson Water in terms of the replacement of sewer and water lines, if they are absolutely necessary in terms of replacing. This will remake Mega Everest Boulevard from the five-point area all the way up to Ridgeway Street. So we're looking at redesigning or getting the cost down so it can come in at the twenty-five million dollars.
The concern is that with tariffs and everything else, and the possibility of gasoline going up and everything else, you know, we might get caught and everything escalate. We don't want to get this thing delayed. So sometimes you get delayed, it may take five, ten years later. But we're leaving it to your end.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. All right, Mr. Stokes. All right, any other questions or comments, colleagues, on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of seven zero. Thank you, colleagues. Item twenty.
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims in the matter of Hedy Jennings individually and next friend of America Jennings versus the City of Jackson, Mississippi, et al., in the Circuit Court of Heinz County, Mississippi, First Judicial District, Civil Action Number twenty-one-eighty.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues. Any questions or comments on this item?
I think you may wanna go on executive session.
Mr. Hartley, Councilman Hartley asked yesterday for some details. I will, off, out of executive session, I can say this is a case we discussed a couple of weeks ago in executive session that involved a fire truck that ran through an intersection, and this is a final resolution of that case if it is approved. If we want to talk about more of it, then we'll need to do it in executive session.
All right, colleagues. Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, so we had six in favor with one extension. Item twenty-one.
Order reviewing and continuing August twenty-ninth, 2022, state of emergency.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? All right, it passes with a vote of seven zero. Item twenty-two.
Order reviewing and continuing state of emergency.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, colleagues, it passes with seven zero. Item twenty-three.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute contracts between the City of Jackson and various organizations for the use of twenty-twenty-three Emerging Solutions Grant Program Funds for Department of Housing and Urban Development totaling one hundred forty-two thousand four hundred seven dollars and forty-five cents for the eligible activities related to rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention, street outreach, emergency shelter, and homelessness management information systems.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Did we make many changes from the previous years to different companies that we gave money to?
Reginald Jefferson, Deputy Director for Housing. Not many changes. A lot of the, if there are, a lot of the changes come from the performance of past nonprofits. That's usually how we choose who receives the funding based on past performances.
Okay, any, did that answer your question, Mr. Stokes?
I feel comfortable with the ones we have. We got Volsa Cavern, Stoopot, Salvation Army. But it seems like we ought to be able to expand.
That has come up, and I've spoken with my manager concerning that. One of our strategies, because with our ESG funds, they are limited. We receive somewhere around one hundred and fifty thousand annually. That's a small amount of money that we do receive. So we feel that if we focus on the entities that have been high performing and be able to give them a little bit more, then they can do more with the funds they receive instead of giving a small amount to many different.
Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Mr. Hartley?
You said you guys do an evaluation. What type of metrics do you use when evaluating these companies? Just curious.
One of the things that we do, we receive monthly reports from the participating nonprofits. So we look at, based on the funds they receive, what they've done, the number of clients that they have, they've serviced, and basically those metrics, just to see, okay, the number of clients you serve, to see, are they basically hitting the target? Are they being effective? That's the main.
Excellent, thank you. And I appreciate the nonprofits for helping our city in this way.
Of course.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It carries with a vote of seven zero. And thank you for your good work on this. All right, colleagues, we are now moving into discussion items. Item twenty-four, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you.
Lanier High School.
Thank you, Madam President. We have Mr. Reed and Mr. Bernard, who's here from the Lanier High School. I'm gonna call the Celebration Committee. It's turning, come over with him, Mr. Bernard. It's turning. Hundred years young, yeah, all Beverly and others. And what we want to do is come to the council, let the city know what's on, what's the schedule for Lanier Celebration of being one hundred years young as a school, a high school, a junior senior high school, high school in the City of Jackson, back to a junior senior again. I'm saying, there comes a junior senior. There was a, now a junior senior again. So again, a hundred years is a long time, and they have many, many plans. People come from all over the country. So, Mr. Reed, could you just brief us on what you want us to know?
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Seajus Reed, President of the WH Lanier Centennial Steering Committee, and I have with me Vice President Lee Bernard and our Marketing Coordinator, Ms. Beverly Harris-Williams. Just want you to know that we're celebrating a hundred years of resilience, excellence, and future possibilities. That's our theme for the celebration. For the past hundred years, Lanier has been instrumental in educating our young people. And moreover, in the last two years, we've become what we call a community school, which means that we go far beyond just education in the walls of the school, but now we're reaching out to the community for support. And we have had tremendous support in our school, and we're asking for the city's support. And you might ask, how can we support you? One is by being aware of what we're doing with the celebration. The weekend of June thirteenth through the fifteenth is our celebration weekend, and I have a flyer to denote those activities that's going on with that weekend. We have a gala at the Convention Center on the fourteenth. And I guess I have mixed emotions because it's been sold out with some six hundred participants, and we probably turned away, would you say, Beverly, a hundred and so more participants that want to attend. So we've extended the celebration to have other events. We have the Georgetown Festival that's on that Saturday morning. We have two days where we made the school available for tours. Coherent in that, the Mega Everest Parade will be also on that Saturday. That Sunday, we have a memorial service at the school. So there are a number of activities that participants can be involved in without paying. We again ask for your support. We know that there will be a need for increased security, for more advertisements. So you can contact our Marketing Director, Ms. Beverly Harris-Williams, and she can give you additional information on how you can support us as a council. We have many noted alumni. I'd use up my three minutes if I tried to list all of the noted alumni, but I will just highlight just these two individuals here. Mr. Bernard, who's known throughout the city for his work, and not only his own personal award, but awards throughout the city for support. And Ms. Beverly Harris-Williams, who is the first African-American female FBI agent for the state of Mississippi. And like I say, I could go on and on. Ms. Larita Cooper Stokes, who was a judge, who's passed on. Fred L. Banks, who was Mississippi Supreme Court Judge. And like I say, I'd be remiss if I didn't continue that list, but I won't bore you with that. There is an article in the Jackson Advocate, March sixth through twelfth, that delineates our celebration and also talks about notable alumni. And I'll end with that and just say that you know as well as I do that there are constituents of Lanier High School in each of your wards. I personally have connection. I'm a resident of Ward One, but my roots are in Ward Three.
Amen.
I played tennis in Ward Two. Banks and I, his father and I are Presbyterian. I'm an elder in the Presbyterian Church. Like I say, I could go on and on. Neighbors of the brother Brian Griselle. So we all connect, and we want to extend that connection through the celebration during the weekend of June thirteenth through the fifteenth.
Well, we certainly appreciate y'all coming before us. Thank you, Mr. Stokes, for asking them. I'm also happy to know who's doing the marketing because I'm seeing everything. I am seeing it all over. You're doing a great job. And so congratulations to all of you, and thank you very much for coming and sharing this wonderful celebration with us.
I'll leave these flyers so you can be reminded of those dates.
Thank you. Thank you.
Beverly is a former police officer.
Oh, JPD?
JPD. JPD.
And went on to the FBI. Awesome. Well, we're, thank you. Thank you for your service. I'm about to join you.
She still has that gun.
Retirement's fun. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, colleagues, we're gonna move now to Reverend PJ Williams Bridge, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I thank Mr. Wright for keeping us involved in terms of what's taking place. And we lost Reverend Adams. Reverend Adams, Reverend Williams, and Cherry Grove Church have been the pastors in that area, and it's been like the lifeline, how people get to church off of Martin Luther King Junior Drive. And they were concerned about what's taking place, what's the timeframe. And, Mr. Wright, would you just bring us up to speed what's happening?
Sure, I can. Louis Wright, CAO, the MLK Bridge, as we refer to it. We bid at that project out, and we're scheduled to open the BS on it the end of this month, on April the twenty-ninth. And if everything comes in okay, we will issue the notice to proceed to the construction company to begin work on it. And once the work starts on it, we hope to have that bridge completed by the end of September. The reason it's taken so long is because the original design called for driving pollens in the ground. But just above that bridge is a high voltage electric line, and the construction companies did not want to get any interference with that line. So the bridge had to be redesigned in a way that we did not have to drive pollens in the ground. So hopefully, if everything works out, we'll have that bridge completed by the end of September.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, discussion review and continuation of COVID nineteen, excuse me, local emergency. Jackson City Council, colleagues, any questions or concerns or comments about COVID? All right, we're gonna continue that. All right, Mr. Attorney. Litigation, discussion, legal matters. Do we have to go into executive session? We will, okay. Then, colleagues, we're gonna go ahead and wrap up the rest of the meeting. Report from members, mayor, department directors. We have our monthly financial reports as required according to Section twenty-one thirty-five thirteen of the Mississippi Code, annotated of nineteen seventy-two. I got mine. I saw it, I read it. Show of hands of everybody else who got theirs and saw it. Will y'all make sure Councilwoman Lee is on that email chain?
Clay.
Clay, sorry. Oh, my God.
It's all good.
You know, it's a seat. It's just a seat. Okay, can y'all make sure she's getting that? Because she's not getting it. I mean, every month, she doesn't, she hasn't seen it. All right, so, thank you. Colleagues, any announcements?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Could we close the meeting on the pastor Marvin Adams, who was the pastor of New Kingdom MB Church? Also, Mr. Ivory Owen Horn, Professor Horn, and Mr. Slick Watts, former pro basketball player with roots in City of Jackson and the Mississippi Delta. Thank you so much.
Proclamation.
Proclamation. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. I'm sorry. All right, Dr. Omari, I just realized that I skipped over item twenty-eight. Proclamation proclaiming April twenty twenty-five is Fair Housing Month. You ready? The mayor's not here, so I.
Thank you. Melissa is going to read the proclamation.
We'll go back to your closings, colleagues. I'm sorry. I do have cataract surgeries scheduled. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I just didn't see it.
President, oh, she's ready. Thank you.
Okay, so this proclamation is about Fair Housing Month, and it was back in nineteen sixty-eight when the Act was passed to make sure that there's no discrimination when it comes to housing. And so we have some representatives here before I read the proclamation. Do you guys want to say hello and say where you're from?
Hello, everyone. I'm Charlotte Harris. To the mayor and the city council, thank you for this proclamation. It's truly an honor to be recognized for our work in fair housing. He has served the citizens of Jackson as well as the state of Mississippi for the last thirty-six years in providing fair housing education. And I also want to add that Mr. Charles Harris is our director.
Amen.
And again, thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate all the hard work you do on this. Very important issue and concern. It affects our city greatly, and really, we appreciate all of you.
Thank you, and this is my coworker, Ms. Sheila Moody. I just wanted to add that.
Oh, come to the mic, ma'am, please, and state your name for the record.
Sorry, Sheila Moody. I just wanted to add that we have a Fair Housing Fair Lending Conference Thursday and Friday of this week at the Hilton Hotel from eight to four.
Thank you so much. And would you introduce everyone else who's here? Okay, well, I know, we'll come up. Would you come on in? I think it's only fair that we get recognition, too.
Thank you, thank you. Again, I'm Reginald Jefferson, Deputy Director for Housing and Community Development, and my team, myself, work with Mr. Harris, deal with all things fair housing. So with me is my Development Assistant Manager, Ms. Stephanie Keen, as well as my Development Assistant Manager, Ms. Loretta Johnson.
We are so honored that you're here with us today, but we also very much appreciate all the work that you do for our city. Okay, you're gonna read it?
I am gonna read the proclamation. Proclamation proclaiming April twenty twenty-five is Fair Housing Month. Whereas the federal Fair Housing Act was signed into law in April nineteen sixty-eight guarantees fair housing for all residents in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act strengthens efforts that address discrimination in our communities, supporting programs that will educate the public in their rights to equal housing opportunities and the right to rent, finance, and purchase a home. And whereas April marks the anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which sought to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to affirmatively increase housing choices for all Americans. And whereas April is nationally recognized as Fair Housing Month, and it is a time to reflect and reaffirm our national commitment to fair housing for everyone in the United States. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas vigorous local efforts to combat discrimination can be effective, if not more so than federal efforts. And whereas barriers to equal opportunity in housing are viewed as acts of discrimination that offend our sense of decency and fairness and diminish the rights of all. and diminish the rights of all. Now therefore, I, Shokwe Antaralumumba, do hereby recognize April as Fair Housing Month and join the national celebration by encouraging all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in the City of Jackson to abide by the letter and spirit of the fair housing law.
Thank you so much. Very nice. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, just a couple announcements. I don't think they mentioned it, but Jackson Police Department is going to have a march, a youth march against violence on this coming Saturday at ten AM, and it will start on Cooper Road, Precinct One, and end at Sykes Park, and that's the JPD Youth March Against Violence, Stop Gun Violence March. And that's Cooper Road this coming Saturday at ten, ten AM. Also, New Horizon Church International is gonna present their community service awards, and this is going to be at New Horizon Church at five PM on this coming Saturday. And again, I'd like to remind everyone, please come out and join us with the Lynch Street Annual Festival. It's just, every year is great. Please, if you want to get tickets, you can contact Ms. Linda Carter with West Jackson CDC for the banquet the night before. But all the, all the events on this Saturday is free, and it's, I think it starts around, I believe, around ten. But please come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. They're also doing a good marketing job as well. Anybody else have anything? All right, then, colleagues, I would take a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing going into actual executive session to discuss legal matters.
So move.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor? Mr. Banks, how did you go?
Oh, I'm gonna.
Okay, thank you. All right, so it's a vote of seven zero to go into closed session. If you are not relevant or. All right, colleagues, we are now out of executive session. While we were in executive session, we took no action as a body. Is there anything else to come before this body at this time? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.